The public hearing pertaining to 686 Manly Street, which is special permit, uh, public hearing for special permit, site plan review and continuation of a meeting from March the 6th, 2024. I'll start out by introducing the board. On my far right is Tony Kinnahan. On my media right is James Noyes. And on my left is Jerry Stetson and Donna Carter, our recording secretary, and Tracy Aldrich, town planner, are also present. This is a continuation, so Scott, if you would introduce yourself and...
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Scott Farrier from Holman Inhearing for MJM Construction. As you folks remember, we were here a couple of weeks ago. We went over, uh, went over the entire site. We were stuck at the very end on our previous proposal had a line going right, right about through here where we had vituminous pavement proposed around the building and for the, the parking associated directly with the building. And then the lot off of Manly Street and a lot further in the back, we had as a gravel parking lot. We talked back and forth about, about certain restrictions and conditions we could put on it. And in the end, we decided to pave the entire site. So in doing so, it necessitated some additional drainage. So we've got now a subsurface drainage system on the front side on Manly Street. On the back parking lot, uh, we have some surface drainage just because we had a little bit more room, uh, surface rooms to play with. We could afford to give up a, a few parking spaces to do some surface drainage there. So we made those changes. We went back and forth with Mr. Brennan, your consultant in this case, and received a blessing from him, I believe, just yesterday. So that's, nothing else changed. Uh, we had, we had a couple of changes that we did discuss at the meeting. We wanted a 2,000 gallon holding tank, a double wall holding tank, which we added. And then we also added the, uh, the area inside the building for, uh, a spill containment, uh, the area that would hold hazardous materials inside the building.
So now all areas can be parked?
Yes. Yep. The entire site is now paved. So we have a, an eight by eight concrete containment area with six inch high concrete curving all the way around. And then the 2,000 gallon double wall holding tank. I think previously we had a thousand gallon, didn't specify the double wall.
Okay. And, uh, would you inform the board of what happened at, uh, Conservation Commission last?
Yeah, we, uh, we closed out the conservation hearing and, uh, received a vote for a positive order of conditions.
Okay. The drainage was, they upgraded the drainage in the front parking lot. I think the B parking lot. And they, they paved it and they put, uh, considerable upgrading of the drainage in the, in the C with it all being paved. So those have been addressed. Mr. Brennan, who is our design, I mean, our consulting view engineer, has, uh, as well as given the blessing to the, to the, uh, conservation, has also written a letter to us. I'm just going to read the highlights of it. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Uh, based on our project on review, his review, based on his review of the revised, uh, plans and hydro cad model, we believe that the revised project applies with the bylaws and the regulations. Uh, they've put this double wall tank in the, Mr. Farrier was just referring to, uh, okay, for the storage. He's put in the inner condition, uh, regarding the, uh, containment systems, and we'll make that one of, one of our conditions. We recommend that general conditions, uh, prohibited uses listed in section 4.6.7, not to be allowed on site except for the storage of liquid hazardous materials and or liquid petroleum products that can comply with the conditions stated in above condition number three. Uh, this should be a condition of approval. Okay, that, uh, he, he says, we suspect that the gravel area identified as parking area B, which, that's the front one, isn't it?
Right.
Front solidly one, would be for storage of earth materials, soil, loom, sand, gravel, et cetera. Motorized vehicles and equipment that have a potential leak petroleum product should not be, and probably should not be stored on the gravel surface. Okay, so you've already turned it to. These, these are, uh, vehicles and equipment should be stored on impervious surfaces that are attributable to the proposed stormwater. So, uh, should the board approve this, that and we, this be approval? So one of our things will be that only storage can be only on, on paved areas.
Correct.
Okay. Just trying to figure what he, what he, what he meant in there.
But I think that's the bottom line.
That is, that is the bottom line with it.
What do you get around, you paved that, is that brown curb?
K-cord brown.
But, um, how high is that? Three inches?
Three inch, three inch K-cord, yeah.
It was, it was somewhere, I remember seeing that he, uh, recommended it be poured monolithically. Is that stated in, in the, in the plans?
Oh, I don't, I don't believe it's stated specifically, Mr. Chairman. I did see it in his comments, but I don't believe that we, uh...
Okay, why don't we make it a condition?
That would be fine.
And if you would revise the plan so that the, whoever does the con, site building of it will say, well, I didn't see it on the plans that I bid on.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of the guy bringing the pavement to bring the one that's got the little shoot the wing thing on it. Some of them don't have them.
No, it's good. I mean, at least it doesn't get ripped up plus the three inches. Like, that's the only concern I had on.
That's three inches over what?
Usually what?
Yeah.
Did he mention a double wall tank?
Yeah.
Tank that simply has a double wall, goes to the tank that's submerged, so to speak.
No, a double, a double wall. Yeah, not a, not a two compartment tank. Right. Yeah.
The outer wall is just to catch anything if it leaks.
Right.
In hopes it never does. Do we need to specify that it be alarmed? That that double wall top tank be alarmed? Because what it does is they put a sensor in it so that if any water gets into that...
I believe that that's all part of it.
Yeah.
I didn't know if that was an extra.
No, that's how the unit comes. It's, that's the, the whole, the way I understood it. Okay, uh, let's just read through the, the conditions. I have 23, and I think we just added a couple. Okay. Conditions, the use will remain appropriate to the hydrology, natural, departury soils and other characteristics. So that's just a boilerplate. Use will not generally, because I was doing, they have to have any adverse environmental, that's just a boilerplate. Uh, the use will not adversely affect any existing, uh, wall. Okay. Okay, number four, no storage of liquid hazardous materials and, and or liquid petroleum, unless storage is above ground or in impervious surface and containers or tanks within approved structure and containment of 10% of the law. Okay, which is the same thing that, uh, Mr. Brennan had said, so that's, that, that's in there. Prohibited uses listed under section 4.6.7 should not be allowed on site except for the storage of liquid, you know? Okay, that's, that, that was right out of, out of Mr. Brennan's. Vehicles and equipment shall be stored on impervious surfaces that are tributary to the proposed stormwater system where treatment is provided. Okay, and maybe, uh, number six, when I read through the whole thing, if that doesn't have on the thing about the, uh, the storage of materials, we will, we will insert the story, it will add it in there, but it may be down here. I can't remember everything that's on here, so, but just keep in mind, Donna, that we may put that one in. Implementation of dust, erosion and sediment control measures is described in the plan set, which, uh, just kind of remind them to do it. Proof of recording of that, applicants shall file a certified copy of the decision in the, not the decision of the, um, recording. Decision should be changed to recording in the registry of deeds to provide evidence such recording is a application for building permit. Number nine, as built plan requirement, the front, project completion and as built plan must be submitted to the building commissioner and planning board prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and or completion. A spill prevention and mitigation plan shall be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of building permit. Applicants shall record their plan with the registry of deeds and provide evidence of same to the building inspector. Annual testing and yearly reports to the building commissioner. Building commissioner and inspector are the same person, but at different times, he's wearing a different hat. All parking areas to be paved and with appropriate drainage, which we've already seen, but it's, it has, it has been done. Parking on paved areas only. No motorized trailers parked at site.
That was referring to the back park?
That was, yeah.
Before you decided to...
That was one of the things, that was one of the things I, I questioned on my, on my list. Okay, so, uh, actually, anything is paved, he can, he can pack, he can pack motorized. So, so, uh, number 14 is, is, is not relevant any longer because you have complied with, with everything. Okay. Proper signage on the site, ensure no vehicle pack on pervious surface areas. Probably still should have some signs here. I don't know whether it's probably anything, there really isn't anything.
No. No, there's really, it's, uh, but, but, you know, you're right. It doesn't hurt to have a couple of signs right over here just so nobody pulls off the pavement.
Yeah, okay.
That's certainly useful.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh...
Just to be safe.
Yeah. Uh, no oil changes, repairs or fueling on the site. Only natural material will be stored in piles, pile height set to be no higher than the zoning bylaws permit as approved by the fire chief, whichever is the law. Okay, yeah. Maybe we'll only be natural. Wood chips is natural. Okay, somewhere in here, we, we did the salt, because Manny said he does not store salt here.
Right, he picks it up at the DPW, yeah, at the municipality.
Okay, so, uh, keep in mind, Donna, number 17, if we don't hit the salt thing, we will, we will insert the salt storage in this section.
It's in the body of the letter right now, but I don't know.
Yeah, but, but as far as it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
Seventeen is, is fine as far as it goes, but we, we still have eight more to go before we... So it may be, no fertilizer, manure, or these, I, period is right there, de-icing storage. The, I, I, de-icing. Why don't you, this will be number 18. Why don't you ring parentheses after de-icing, put salt? So that, uh, this just...
Because actually, it's, they're using two things now. They're using salt and liquid calcium?
Yeah, yeah, that, that stuff is wild.
And they mix it with the salt.
Some of them just create a...
Yeah, but it, this, like this town, it, they have a sprayer they can turn on it. Yes, it's salting, particularly on, on black ice. Because salt lots of times doesn't work quick on black ice, and this will activate the black, on the black ice.
Okay, number 19, trucks to, to come on site, hook up trailers and leave. No backing up into the site or backing out of the site on a Manly Street. You pretty much have addressed that because you, you put a curbing and a, and a green strip all over.
Exactly.
But let's leave it in there, because we, we don't want to see a 53 footer.
You still don't want somebody trying to back in off of Manly Street.
All right. Backing into, it's when they're backing out so they can't even see what, what's behind it.
They'll hear something.
I'm looking at the, the spaces up front. You either got to pull in or how are they going to?
Cause those are, those are only about 28 feet maximum.
They, you know, he would end up putting smaller, smaller trucks.
Scott, isn't there, isn't from there, doesn't the curbing?
Yep.
Or an island start all the way up?
Yep, all the way down.
All the way up to there?
Cause he smoothed everything back since we've met.
Yep.
Where's the driveway?
The driveway is right here.
Right, yeah.
Right, and then the second driveway is over here.
So all of this, it's got a, a curbing and an island in it?
Yep.
Yeah, but right at the driveway, you could pull in off of Manly Street and just go straight into that space.
Right.
Then how do you back out?
Where, he's assuming, he's going to put smaller equipment there, not, you know, not track or drill.
But that, that's why, that's why we, we want the, uh, let, let's have a sign there too.
Yep. No backing. Yep.
And, uh, on number 19 with that, and, uh, and, and signage to be, be placed at the entrances.
Well, I go with some, go back to the side. You show the spaces, are they going to be marked or not? Those aren't marked spaces.
No, realistically, they're not going to be marked. I mean, we showed them just to give you an idea, really more to get the board of appeals an idea of how many vehicles would be out there, but no, they're, they're not going to be marked. The, the spaces around the building.
Is he still going to put the cement blocks into it out front? Cause at one time, I don't, I don't remember if it's, they're now, used to be each truck had its own Jersey barrier that'd be backed in between them.
I don't think so.
No, I wouldn't think with pavement.
No, not with a finished site, I wouldn't think so.
Okay, number 20, parking area B, which is the one out front, uh, is noted on plan to be used for dry storage of materials only. No, okay, wait a minute.
B is actually out in the back, isn't it, Jim?
B is in the back?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And that's the, the little dry storage areas that we had. You know, just for some gravel.
Oh, okay. All right, I get it. Okay. So, uh, now as far as, uh... Okay, so he is going to probably want to be able to do vehicle parking. He's got it paved, everything, he's, he's addressed everything.
Right.
So this is number 20, Donna. I'll read it again, parking area B is noted on plan to be used for dry storage and material storage only. You probably, probably should strike the whole thing. So just strike number 20. Lighting to be dark sky compliant and downcast. He isn't going to have any lights out there?
Correct.
Okay. Number 22, there shall be an annual inspection of vehicles by as determined necessary by the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer. So, and I, and it's a, somewhere in here is a, is a yearly, is an annual report to, but he... So he'll be doing that. Uh, number 23, change, the change of use shall be subject to review by building, department and planning board. Okay, and somewhere, uh... We were, we were going to have, um, a change of use. A change of use, a change of, of ownership shall require a review and possibly an amended, what was that word? We were talking about this morning.
Yeah, I don't remember. I remember talking about the change of use and change of ownership.
Yeah, he had it somewhere, uh...
Upon change of ownership, project shall be reviewed?
Shall be reviewed. He doesn't want somebody coming here and...
If he never sells it, it don't matter.
Yeah, and...
Mainly to let him have, know the rules.
Yeah, just, just so that we...
Yeah, I think we were figuring, just so nobody can come back and say, I didn't know about that.
You didn't know about that. Manny has the, when he, if he sells the property, he brings, and he's selling to us to come to us.
They can come before you, you can tell him what to do.
Did I? Somewhere? Oh, yeah.
Is this the intended...
Okay.
You're all right.
Yeah, we got, we got...
We'll give you a bigger desk.
Okay, no, I don't want a bigger desk. I want that little desk over there, that everything could fall off of it. Okay, initially, and this may have changed on the original one on page two, the third paragraph. There's something different here, but we're looking at, no. The last paragraph, from last... I can't find it in here now. But, but what we, what we're looking for is, is a, is a condition that for any change of use or change of ownership, that they have to come back for a review. And at that time, if it is sufficient, we'll, they'll have to come in for amended. If it, if it isn't, we will, we will sign off and...
Do we want that on the plan?
No, it'll be on the condition. And then we had a, uh, the, the two conditions that Mr. Brennan had, had proposed. In fact, one of them, one of them is, uh, the 4.6.7, I, I think just has to be integrated. Some, either wording has changed a little bit in here. Number five, you probably should rewrite that one a little bit to bring it into compliance with, uh, Mr. Brennan's recommendation. And the other one is, uh, that's 6.7, and then, uh... And I think that'll do it. Does anybody have anything further?
We should be, if you have an outside agency or group to inspect that storage tank, and the alarm goes off or the tank fails for some reason, we must be notified.
Okay, so, um...
I know with fuel tanks, particularly the ones at the fire station, the double wall, that they have an annual contract with a company that, actually, I think it's the manufacturer of the tank or the... It turned out that the guy that did the inspections lived in town, but he would, that was what he did, was he came out and you can, you're allowed to have a certain amount of condensation, you know, because of the changes in the element, but it's only like a quarter or half an inch in the bottom of it. It's not a lot, but...
If we've got to do an annual inspection of the site, I think it said for the building inspector, we can, you know, we can probably specify and, you know, and the type tank as well.
Yeah, okay. And, and all the recording, yeah, okay. There you go.
Yep.
Cause enterprise.
Yeah, we do one for enterprise.
Yeah, I thought it was you guys do this.
Yep, of both the, the site and the parking area. You know, the, the whole complex there. Yep, pretty much the same thing. In fact, I think he told us not to give them to you anymore. Or maybe it was conservation. Somebody told us, don't give them to them anymore, give them to...
Really, the guy that's keeping, got the file cabinet, it's, it's the building.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we...
I think conservation told us just give them to the building.
Yeah, cause it's, it's a zoning...
He's the enforcer.
Yep.
It's a zoning thing, and he is, he is, he is our agent.
He can enforce it immediate, not wait for us to have a meeting.
To have a meeting, right.
He has.
Yep.
Okay, is it any further concerns or questions or... Okay, I have, now we've got to do some work. We have to make some determinations. Okay, we have to make the determination. As special permit considered set forth in 7.5.3.1, A, the site, the specific site is appropriate location for such use, structure and condition. And the reason being, it's been pointed out, proposed use as a contracted storage, and yeah, it is consistent with uses, other uses in the industrial district and appropriate access has been provided to the facility. Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, approves such use in a separate, uh, as, separate decision available as Town Clerk File Number, but that was one of the things, you got it in here, Donna. B, the use as developed and operated will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Property, and the reason being is the property is located in industrial districts surrounded by wooded areas and similar uses, proposed use as an office and warehouse facility, which will not adversely affect the neighborhood. And, uh, see decision...
Would check out there. I think it's one of those purple, pink, smart up terms.
Uh, and, and this also refers to the previous CBA decisions. C, there will be no nuisance or hazardous to vehicles or pedestrians or volume greater than the capacity of the streets to be affected. There are no elements, the reason being, there are no elements of the project that will be a nuisance to the, or hazardous to pedestrians or that will create greater volume than the capacity of the streets affected. Again, refers to the CBA decision. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. Proposed contracted storage office and building facility is adequate and appropriate for the proper operation of the proposed use, which includes office-based sanitation, parking, conservation mission was assisted in its previous stormwater review by Patrick Brennan, P E, P G, B Engineering, and provided such review to the board. The planning board was also assisted, the review by Mr. Brennan. And, uh, decision, decision, approval of use. E, access to the site is over streets appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. E, access to the site is over streets appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. This is right out of our zoning. The location of the project on Manly Street was proximal to the highways provided vehicle access consistent with the uses. This one doesn't have a page five. This one has a page five, okay. This one doesn't have a page five. I know you're just trying to check, catch me, but I'm smart enough to look at the page numbers.
Yes, I know, the computer changes the most in the last.
I know this does. Ah, okay. Page five. E, you know, we're missing something. Because we, we go from page four where we're discussing the things in, in four point, uh, I mean, section seven point five point three point one, and now. Okay, I guess we're all right now, we, okay, applicant, okay, we, now we're in the tougher section.
You okay?
No.
Yeah, yeah. Not having a check.
I'm starting to feel sorry for the wife. She must be worse at home.
Okay, now this, and as I said, following special permit consideration set in, set forth in section seven point five point three point two with the zoning bylaws, as such a determination required under section four point six of the zoning bylaws as follows. A, is consistent with the purpose and intention of section four point six. The limitation on the proposed use and improvements to well and drainage and conservations related to grading and snow removal with design to protect the water resource protection overlay and location of the property in the industrial zone is consistent with intent of section four point six. B, appropriate to the hydrology, natural, supportive soils and other characteristics of the site to be developed. As conditioned, improvements to drainage and considerations of proposed site and use plans are appropriate. C, will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on the, any zone of the water resource protection district. The proposed use erosion control measures set forth in the plan set and considerate related to drainage is designed to address potential adverse environmental impacts on zones of the water resource protection district. D, will not adversely affect an existing or designated future public well. As conditioned, improvements at drainage and considerations related to grading and snow removal as set forth in the plans that were designed to address potential adverse effects to existing or designed future public wells. Number E, letter E, access to the site or the streets is appropriate for the use of the vehicle involved. Location of the project on Manly Street was proximity to highways provide, uh, vehicle access consistent with uses in the industrial zone. Okay, next thing is a motion. I will entertain a motion that will read, a motion to grant M J M Construction and Business Owner Manuel Burgund India a special permit for activities in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District to construct a commercial building with associated grading utilities and site work for the contractor's office and storage yard, which use was previously approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals at the property located at six eight six Manly Street, West Bridgewater, in the Industrial and Water Resource Overlay Protection as detailed in the twelve-page plan, it's twelve pages, set entitled, proposed commercial building of six eighty-four and six eighty-six Manly Street, West Bridgewater, Plymouth County, M A, prepared for M J M Incursion Company by J L Holgren Engineering, L L C, one thousand and twenty-four Pearl Street, Brockton, Mass, dated January two, twenty twenty-four, and revised through March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, subject to law and conditions. Is the revision date correct?
March nineteenth.
I knew that one was probably changed. Okay, I, I have already read through all the conditions, so the, the motion will con, will contain the conditions outlined and previously read into the record.
Motion as presented. Except as presented.
Say so moved.
So moved.
Thank you, and.
Second.
That's sectioned by Mr. Kinnahan. Okay, I will poll the, the members.
So, Mr. Kinnahan, did you want to do a, do the full vote?
Yeah, that's what I said, I'll poll the members for the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Noyes.
Aye.
Mr. Steffson.
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye. Being the four required for a vote, this being a special permit, we need a vote of four of the five members, which we have unanimous of the four present, so we do have a vote. Okay, get that out of there. Now we've got to do site plan review. I mean, the specific site is appropriate to locations such use and structural conditions, which I think we've already outlined. B, the use as developed and operated will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The property is located in an industrial district surrounded by wooded areas and similar areas, which we've already determined previously. I know that's redundant, but it's a, it's a different section. There will be no nuisance or hazardous to vehicles or pedestrians or volume greater than the capacity of streets to be affected, which we've already voted affirmatively. And adequate and appropriate facility will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, which is already addressed. I will entertain a motion to approve the twelve-plan, twelve, let me see, twelve-page plan set entitled, proposed commercial building, which had already read into it.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kinnahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Noyes.
Aye.
Mr. Steffson.
Aye.
And Mr. Hurley votes aye. And we only needed a vote of three for the approval of the site plan review, but it was unanimous of the four present. Okay, also is noted that any person aggravated by the proposed site plan of this board may pursuant to the applicable provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, appeal this decision to the courts and commonwealth as set forth in Chapter forty, uh, forty-eight. Said, appeal must be filed within twenty days of the decision. The decision will take, shall not take place until a copy of the decision, bearing the certification of the town clerk, that twenty days have elapsed since the decision has been filed with the town clerk, and no appeal has been filed, or that if such appeal has been filed that it has been dismissed and is recorded for the Plymouth County Registry and of the Plymouth County Land Court Registry and indexed in the granted index under the name of the record owner or is recorded and noted on the owner's certificate of title. That being said, I will close this public hearing and, and, uh, as soon as we get a chance, we'll have it filed, we'll have it signed. We've got to do a few things here, and it'll be recorded at the, at the town clerk.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, good night.
Thank you. Nobody else has appeared for the other two, uh, public hearings in the, um, excuse me. Nobody has, has appeared for the public hearing pertaining to Lamp Post Estates. We will just continue to the next meeting. We have a request for a continuation of Crescent Farm subdivision, at which point I am an interested party, and I'm, I'm going to read into the record the disclaimer, and I will have, we'll pass the gavel on to the secretary, the board's, the board secretary to handle it.
Okay, you got it.
Yeah, yeah, it's all right, right.
You're the clerk, you're the clerk. Excuse me.
Oh, no, I, I'm just.
No, you are. Okay. Uh, chairman, okay, okay, I want to read into the record. Having an ownership interest, and this is pertaining to Crescent Street, Crescent View Farm. I saw town council opinion as to my role in the public hearing, which opinion has been filed with the town clerk. I will not be participating in the manner as a planning board member and will not participate in elimination or vote on the matter. I will be joining the audience and will be representing myself personally and speaking on my own behalf consistent with town council direction and State Ethics Commission guidance that municipal employee may always represent his own personal interests even before his own municipal agency or board, in the same terms and conditions that any similarly situated member of the public would be allowed to do. With that being said, I'm going to step down while the action's taken.
Okay. Vote to. Are we, we got to reopen?
Yes.
Reopen the hearing on Crescent View Farms. The proponent has requested, uh, a continuance for Crescent View Farms definitive plan hearing for project for two seventeen Crescent Street until April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting of the planning board at seven thirty P M. And extend the planning board action until June sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. So I have a motion to accept their letter of extension?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jimmy, aye? Aye. All those in favor of those present? So, do I, am I the only one that has to sign this?
I think everyone signed, the three of you have signed it.
While I'm doing this, Lamp Post, we were intending to put it on the warrant. Can we still put it, request it to be on the warrant, and then pull it the day of the town meeting?
That's what you did previously, the warrant closes Friday.
Yeah, so we want to get it on the warrant. If the paperwork doesn't come together and everything's satisfied, then it just, come town meeting, it's just, but we still want to keep it on the wa, for town meeting?
I would say so, have you heard, has anybody heard it from?
I know there's been stuff done up there. One of the drains is, uh, one of the drains was, uh, leaves. And the other one, from what I can read into the plans, is, uh, built according to plan. It is designed, instead of having a chain link fence, Mr. Andruddus put up a post rail, fiber post rail fence, because the neighbors wanted something that looked a little better than the chain link fence. And the person was complaining because the water's staying in there. But if the water, the water to the retention area on the other side of the pond isn't draining out, it's not going to drain out of that, that pipe. I mean, we've had so many doses, I mean, we haven't got a sprinkle, we've got three inches every time it rains. So I think it's designed, the engineers said everything was done according to code, the way we wanted it. And it's by, and it's up to, uh, Mr. Andruddus to settle the property issues because we don't have anything to do with the property. I mean.
Is that one in that one, or number one?
Law number one. I know they raked the leaves away from the drain, and all the water disappeared from the street, so. And the house number nine, that's an issue between the builder and.
Water, but it's nothing to do with us.
And it's backyard water, it's not front yard water, it's not like it's water running from the front yard.
The way they described it, I thought it was the front yard.
No, it's backyard and it's a walkout basement.
He did say that it was in his front yard, he couldn't use it because of the water.
His front yard, his front yard is paved from the house to the street, there's no water.
Okay, so it's his backyard.
It's backyard. And that backyard, when we get heavy rain, the property all the way up to Lincoln Street comes right down through to that drain. I mean, I, I was up there last, not last week, but the week before, and we got that heavy rainstorm, and the water's just washing right in behind us back house, right down a swale, right to that drain. So the drain is working, and, I mean, it's still holding six, eight, six inches of water, but. But until we hear back from them, but I just want to make sure we get a motion to, we have a motion to have it put on the warrant for, for acceptance. And then, because really, I think we voted, we voted acceptance of streets the night before, the night before a town meeting, but you have to get it on the warrant.
On page three, there's language for the motion, if you wish to approve the layout, that came from the selectment's policy on accepting.
Page three. Okay, entertain a motion, per the selectment's policy pertaining to acceptance of subdivision roads approved by the planning board, move to approve the layout of Lamp Post into report saying at town meeting for acceptance. That way it at least gets on the warrant.
I'll move it.
Tony, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's on the warrant, if they don't satisfy what's going, what we need done, it doesn't get put to town meeting?
Um, getting back to this, in the continuation, all three of us supposed to sign this?
Well, it's Tracy's looking for us, so.
Yeah, because you signed one, Tony signed one.
I signed two of the same. And one is a letter. You have two there that are the same ones.
The letters over here, those are the two, should be two of the same document.
Jerry's there, you're there.
But I should have signed that it dated it.
Oh, I see, Jerry, it's a time that's inadvertently. Oh, I see, Jerry, you signed this inadvertently.
Yeah, but I sa, I signed, because I put the time and date.
Didn't I?
No.
No, I didn't.
I think this was probably underneath it.
One of us is crazy, and certainly is a new.
I'm tired.
All right, I'll sign, I need to sign now.
Okay.
I'll just stand. Do you have a design, the signs?
Hugh, you should, you should sign it off.
That's what I thought. Now I'd accept the motion to accept Hugh back in and close the public hearing. And say good night, second.
I was gonna say a motion to a juror.
Not yet.
And good night, Irene.